Ms. Johnson, if you could please call roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Calley?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. calls? Ms. Rainey?
Here.
Ms. Shulist?
Here.
Ms. Senyard?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. If you'll join me for opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. We'll go to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Rainey, motion for approval. Anderson, second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Thank you. Go to citizens' comments.
There are none tonight.
Thank you. Approval minutes from the July 13th, 2021, regular meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jenkins with a motion of approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Rainey? Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
One more done. Thank you. Move to new business. Item one, PC Resolution 31, PC-3121, final plat, Scarborough Place, Section 3. Eleven building lots on 2.23 acres, map 42 GB parcel four. Property owner, TE Smithson Builders LLC. Good evening. If you could state your name for me, sir.
Thomas Smithson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smithson, do you have anything for us or just here for case any questions? Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir. According to staff comments, this is all staff comments were met. With that being said, does that include the additional fire hydrant that was requested in the cul-de-sac? The fire hydrant that was requested, there was a note from the fire department. With this being a final plat and not construction plans, that note was made if a hydrant would be put in, but it could not be required because of it being final plat versus construction plans. That would have been caught earlier on during construction plans, but that was years ago. Wonderful. Thank you. And sir, I noticed that on note eight of the plans there, that the owners of lots nine, 10, and 11 are responsible for the maintenance or repair of the detention pond behind them. They all share that detention pond. Yet note 10 specifically mentions that common space maintenance will be the responsibility of the HOA and maintenance of the detention pond. So who is responsible for maintaining the detention pond?
I thought they changed that to Scarborough homeowners.
I don't know, sir. I was just looking at the.
That's what the engineer and Chaplain told me.
Okay, so the detention pond is part of the HOA responsibilities?
Yeah, it'll be part of their responsibility.
Okay.
But I thought it was already put in the deed.
Sounds like it was maybe added to the plat, but another note was probably forgotten to be removed.
Okay.
It's general note 10 that, on the plat, that common space maintenance, which, are you saying that the retention pond is part of common space?
I'm sorry, I'm having a tough time hearing you because my hearing aids.
No problem.
Okay. I can hear you now. I turned them up.
Note 10 says that, or note nine, all detention areas will be fenced, and then note 10 says common space maintenance will be the responsibility of the HOA and maintenance of the detention pond. So it's noted on the plans.
They're just in conflict. They had both.
Lot 10 is a dead lot.
Gotcha.
It's got a, and so I was gonna kind of make a little, part little area for Scarborough. That's what it's gonna kind of be. But I'm kind of waiting till the homeowners really come in and take it over. But they will be responsible for it.
Mr. Smithson, I'm sorry. I did not hear you say what lot 10 was going to be.
It's kind of a dead lot because there was a pole in the middle of it.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna donate it to Scarborough Homeowners Association. I'm gonna clean it up, you know, grass seed it, or they'll have a kind of player area.
Okay, thank, I just didn't hear you. Thanks here.
Sir, to clarify, lot 10 is the one that will be the dead lot, or lot eight, the one it's considered, it's labeled as common space on the plan here? It's between lots seven?
Maybe it is lot eight.
Okay.
I mean, I'm.
Lots nine, 10, and 11 are right next to each other, and they share the detention pond on the rear side of the lots.
Right. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. That's right.
Do you have the pointer? If you could just point to lot eight for us up there.
It's the shady one.
The third one over.
That's right.
From the left.
That's good.
It's giving me problems tonight. There we go, it's on that far one.
Any additional comments or questions? From a staff's perspective, should we ask that that note for the lots to have ownership of those be removed?
As staff, I would suggest that being part of the approval is to have the note for lots eight, nine, and 10, or.
It's note number eight.
Note eight, which speaks of 11, 10, nine, 10, and 11, just having that note removed with approval.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Restate what you, lot eight is the one that's gonna be removed?
Lot eight is shown here as common space. Ms. Deacon said the approval would be with lots nine, 10, and 11 being removed from the note for maintenance.
Note eight.
So it's note eight regarding lots nine, 10, and 11.
I don't understand. Just the homeowner. Okay.
Yeah. It's just conflicting itself.
I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I'd like to make a motion for the planning commission to approve Resolution number 31-21, with the exception of general note number eight.
Second.
A motion for approval, removing general note and break from the plat. Jenkins, second. Rainey?
This.
Yes, sir.
Just hearing this, just a point, just to make sure everyone understands kind of where we are. I understand the removal of the note, but on the plat itself, the plat would remain unchanged. So in showing this, the detention pond is still going to be in its entirety comprised of set parts of lots nine, 10, and 11.
Oh, it is shown as.
As I see that. So my concern is whether or not that section should be redrawn to be removed from those lots prior to the signing of the final plat. So that once the plat's filed, it's clearly delineated on the plat that the detention pond is not a part of those lots, because as it's drawn, that would be platted on those properties. So I think we're headed in the right direction. We just need to make sure before we sign the plat, which could be a part of the motion, that the detention pond be clearly delineated from and separate from lots nine, 10, and 11.
Mr. Smithson, do you understand that? The way it has drawn, it shows the pond still sitting on those lots, has a note that says it's not on those lots, but the plat itself shows them sitting on those lots.
You just want it separated on the plat. Yeah, I think Chaplain could, that wouldn't be any problem.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Currently, the plat shows that as a drainage easement, and that would just need to be carved out as common space to comply, to kind of clean it up and match up with note 10, which indicates common space and detention pond are maintained by the HOA. Well, right now, it's shown as a drainage easement, but with the revision, that line that's shown as a drainage easement would then be shaded similar to the common space of his, of the lot eight that's now a dead lot. So that area back there would then be maintained by the HOA, consistent with note 10.
Phrasing would be now retention pond, not drainage easement.
So we have a first and a second. If the second or the first would like to remove or amend.
I will remove mine.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Jenkins, would you like?
And I'll go ahead and amend my motion.
Thank you, sir.
So let me read through this again. So I'd like to make a motion for the planning commission to approve Resolution number 31-21, with the exception of general note number eight in the plans. And prior to the final plat being signed, the plans must be updated to reflect the detention pond being a component of common space as opposed to ownership of lots nine, 10, and 11. Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Perfect.
I will second that.
So we have first and a second. Anyone have any questions about that or any additional discussions? Ms. Smithson, you understand as well, right?
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Move to new business. Item two, PC Resolution, PC 32-21, final plat, Sam Burgess Subdivision, four building lots on 11.25 acres, map 47 parcels 92.02 and 92.03. Property owner, Sam Burgess and Arthur Macaro. Welcome, Mr. Burgess. Any questions or discussion on this? Correct.
So. So one of my, just the first thing, I caught my eye. I thought when we had this last time, we had talked about having to put a driveway to one, lot one, from the Cumberland Drive. Did something change there?
Not yet. I wanted to make sure that everything was gonna be approved before I started doing anything construction-wise.
Okay.
Just the plat itself almost looks like all three of those lots are still being accessed by that same entry drive, so you don't show any difference of lot one, if that makes sense. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, I guess that's what.
What do you mean on the plat?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I don't know why that didn't happen. It should be shown as a separate entrance. I guess it's because it has the road frontage to deal with it, to handle it, that I didn't know if we needed to show the actual construction location for lot one.
The plat shows existing conditions. There is a note on the plat that says direct driveway access for lot one shall meet, shall exit directly off Cumberland Drive and not from adjoining lot three. So there is a note on that plat about, maybe we have the page that specifically calls that out, but existing conditions that is shown with that driveway there.
Okay.
When we record it, do we need to show new existing conditions, or is that satisfied since you have a note calling it out?
The only way for that to change would be for the driveway to change, and until the recording happens, it's not a separate lot. So that would be something that we could just make sure that does happen with the construction on those other lots.
Perfect. Any additional questions, comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion for approval. Anderson, second. McDonald? Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate all of y'all.
New business item three, excuse me, PC Resolution, PC 33-21, residential site variance, 7164 Kyle's Creek Drive, map 047G. G parcel two, property owner, William Lovelace. Good evening. If you could state your name for me, sir.
William Lovelace.
So this is one that I've worked with the builder and the landowner a little bit on getting through the requirements. There's a couple of things about this lot. One is the plan shows that slope, you know, slopes that are on site that exceed the hillside development standard based on lot size. But this is a lot that was previously approved as part of a subdivision. Because of the slope and also the location of the adjacent flood plain and floodway, it qualified as what's called a critical lot. And so because of the slope and because of the proximity to the mapped floodway, that's where this, that's where this issue come in to bring before, before the board and discuss what's needed within the requirements there. So and with, as far as minimum lot size, if you have a slope that exceeds 15%, it then qualifies, it's then required to be a three acre lot. Well, this lot's two acres. So then that would be the standard that's in the subregs. For floodway, it's kind of hard to see, and I'll kind of point to it there. There's a couple of lines right here on the, on the site layout. That is where the FEMA official map shows the floodway to be located through that area. If you follow, there's a, there's a faint dotted line there that cuts right through the middle of the house. Well, in actuality, going out and looking at it and talking to survey and getting an actual survey, the floodway is actually down here. But in order to get that updated through FEMA, they have to submit what's called a letter of map revision to revise their map. And as part of that, there's a community acknowledgement form that then requires the city to state that there's never been any fill placed in the floodway that's in the official map. So this is one of those things where we're at a good position because they haven't started doing earthwork or anything on the site, so we can, I'm hoping that we can help them, help them go through with this. And because the map is actually, needs to be updated to where the floodway really is.
It's kind of a follow-up. There are several homes on this side of the street adjacent to this property where those homes have been constructed. And we've had a couple of instances where those homeowners have brought to us the community acknowledgement form so we could go back and say that there's been no fill placed or removed on those, on those lots. However, those have been brought to us after the homes have been constructed and the homes were found to be in the floodway. And speaking with FEMA and speaking with the state, they acknowledge that the flood map is incorrect. They understand, they acknowledge to us that the flood map shows the floodway or the flood map closer to the road than it actually is. However, in bringing us the documents so we can start forward with the letter of map revision and to assist the homeowners, this is the first one that's been brought to our attention that is brought to us prior to construction. Each one that we've seen has been after the home has been constructed, and we don't have any way to go back and confirm whether or not fill has been placed or removed from the site. In this instance, we can get ahead of it and say we know that no fill has been placed on the site, no dirt has been removed from the site, and we assert our belief that the flood map is in fact wrong. So this, this waiver will allow us to sign the community acknowledgement form, which will then allow us to start the process with FEMA to start the letter of map, or the map revision that will move the entire floodway from the homes that exist in the area. We, this is the first one we've had that gave us the opportunity to get ahead of the map revision by being able to clearly state that nothing is moved on the site and the map is wrong. So not only for this property owner, which we believe is proper, but we also believe in the approval of this variance and our signing of the community acknowledgement form will actually assist the adjacent property owners who can remove their homes from the floodway, which everyone admits are not in the actual floodway. It's a mapping issue, not a floodway issue. So this request obviously is favorable to the staff, and we think it will help several homes in that, in that stretch of homes.
And the surveyor that, that perform, that puts together that letter that goes to FEMA has a signed document that certifies the elevations on site. So they're signed and sealed, and that is a requirement of FEMA to, to show them that their map, they just have to look at their map and see from, you know, on the ground, real measurements that it's, that it needs to be updated. And that's, that's kind of the process that FEMA requires.
Did either of the adjacent properties or I guess in that area have a similar request for the variance on the slope threshold, or is this the only one?
There was an amendment to FEMA, but for the slope, no.
Mr. Blackburn, just to clarify, it sounds like the second, I'm not counting them correctly, but the whereas statement regarding the property being in a FEMA mapped floodway, that's been taken care of. That sounds like we're, that's been cleared. But what about the previous one about, about the five acre minimum to build on a lot with a slope of 20% or greater? Does that still apply here, even if it's not in the floodway?
Based on our, our subregs, it is.
And what is the purpose of having that acreage minimum?
I believe that it was originally written to preserve, preserve natural slopes on hillside, as a hillside development standard, to maintain topography. I'm not really certain as to why it was brought up in the, to begin with. In this case, a three acre lot doesn't really make sense for, for where, the way that lot lies. And being that it was part of a previously approved subdivision, you know, I think in this case, it doesn't really make sense to preserve that small of an area. Now, if it's an entire hillside and you're talking acres of, of steep slope, you've got to figure out how to mitigate runoff and things like that. In this case, you're only talking about maybe 100 feet. So I don't see it as a, it's not a concern to me. And I think that's, this may be something that as staff, we need to look at as we update our standards.
Wonderful.
It doesn't need to be noted that there's curbs and gutter storm sewer system out in the streets so that the runoff to that lot is minimized.
That's correct.
And it's controlled down to the very end of the cul-de-sac.
So the street has a plan that has been approved, and they've already constructed much of that. So I'm hopeful that that's all been, it's all been reviewed and approved and built.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that it is part of a platted subdivision that was engineered, the drainage was engineered. This was all brought before planning commission. So it's not something that has never been looked at before by the community. Building lot.
So as far as making a motion here, staff, the notes seem to apply to the FEMA, which seems like it's gonna be solved. So do we need to make potentially a motion to approve with the variance only for 13-102-1? Or?
I think in order for us to obtain a building permit, we need a variance for both issues.
Okay.
And to facilitate the FEMA map amendment, we actually need the structure in place. FEMA requires that the House actually be there.
In this case, it would be more of what we would say is more of a waiver. Is that correct? The. Rather than a variance?
I believe they would both be variances.
Okay.
And you would just have the two motions, one for the, one for the slope and the other for the floodway.
So a positive recommendation would include a motion to, for a variance on the, on the slope and then also the floodway area, if anyone needs to make a motion.
Yes, sir. And then we would attach the floodway variance resolution to any letter that we submit, so they would have that separate.
I'm ready to, I can make a motion again. Cool.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the planning commission to approve this request to grant variances to zoning ordinance 13-102.1, requiring a five acre minimum to build on a lot of a slope of 20% or greater, and zoning ordinance 10-305.3 restricting a building permit for a structure and a published FEMA map floodway to allow for construction of a single-family dwelling for 7164 Kyle's Creek Drive in accordance with the preliminary site plan.
Second.
Jenkins with the motion. Shulist with the second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did he say a five acre requirement or a three acre requirement? Does it matter? That we're making the.
In cases where it's between 15 and 20, it would be a three acre. If it's more than 20, it'd be five. In this case, it would be a three.
Okay. I thought his motion said five acre change. Okay.
The motion does say five acre, five acres. That is correct. That's as written in the resolution.
That should satisfy the, the variance, yeah. So first, we have a second. Additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Move to new business. Item four, PC Resolution, PC 34-21, annexation and zoning, Woodwick Subdivision, 19.88 acres, map 21 parcels 56.02 and 56.03. Proposed zoning are 20. Residential property owner, Tony Cavender and Edith Robertson Trust.
Hey, good evening. Nathan McVay with T-Square Engineering. We're requesting approval for the annexation rezoning of these two parcels to R20. There'll be 19.88 acres total. Water Authority of Dixie County has given us the option to be served by water and sewer. On preliminary layouts, we're looking at approximately 28 single-family lots here. So that's about a density of 1.4 units per acre. And we feel like this abides by the 2040 plan, which notes this as a new residential medium neighborhood area. I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
Adjacent lots, are those annexed in as well? Are those not annexed?
Not yet. No, ma'am.
On the map, you can kind of see a faint green line that follows several of the lot lines. The properties inside the green area are City Fairview, and there are a few properties there that currently are county, and then if this annexation goes through, would stay kind of a county done at hole there in the middle. Mr. Collins, clarification regarding zoning ordinances going forward. We are eliminating R20 puts, correct? Okay. So then I don't see a reason why the R20 zoning designation would not fall into the comprehensive 2040 plan like you mentioned.
Any additional questions or discussion? Anderson, McDonald. Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Oh.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. New business item five, PC resolution, PC-35-21, annexation Fernbrook subdivision, 132.24 acres, map 23, parcel 66.01. Proposed zoning RS40, residential property owner Charlie Mitchell, Jr. Good evening. If you could state your name for me, sir?
Burt Morton.
Could you give us a little more information on this piece and, and why you're requesting annexation?
Yeah, this is for a proposed subdivision of large estate lots, 15 acres or greater. We initially approached the county for subdivision, but since it's in the municipal growth area one, zoning district in the county, must first go through the, the local jurisdiction for annexation. It's on, it's in the, it's shown on the Williamson County GIS as a future municipal growth boundary within Fairview.
So you said lot sizes 15 acres or greater. Do you have a lot number, a total lot number?
Within Fairview, between eight and nine.
So this will extend over to that Davidson County side as well? Would be the plan?
Uh, the goal is to have a private road connecting the two, you know, connecting from 96 to 100, gated community, you know, to eliminate pass through and shortcuts, things like that.
Would that road entrance be at the top of the hill there where they've been using access now?
It would be. That's right. I've talked with Kevin about that for a bit and that's, and we'll have to, to engineer that and make sure the site distance is appropriate.
Perfect.
Tell me again, how many lots there would be in, in, that we're talking about being in Fairview?
We don't have a full site plan, but between eight and nine.
Okay. Thank you.
On metro side, it would be 12.
Sir, just to clarify, that's eight to nine lots on the 132 acres?
Correct. On, on the, on the Williamson County side. It crosses over to Davidson County. The entire parcel is, is on two counties and it's over, I think it's over 300 acres.
You may not have gotten this far in your site planning yet, but what divides the two counties on these lot, on the lot plat?
But while the, the limit of the plat right there, you know, being, that's the Williamson County side of it, so the limit of the plat is the...
Right. But I guess I mean...
Right. Oh, okay. Kevin's showing it right there. That's a good question.
But are you going to put home, like a road between them or like a home that will be on both sides of the county? Just wondering.
Probably, probably the, the latter. So it'll, I'm certain that the lot lines are going to cross over, you know, for, because we're trying to work with, with existing ridges and valleys. So we don't, you know, where do the driveways stand? I'm not really sure. The roadway, when they're, you know, when it's constructed, will be a private road. And so it'll have to meet the city standards and metro standards. But the difference with the, you know, with the grades and the, and the vertical curves and horizontal curves. But we haven't, we haven't, there's an existing historical road, which we intend to, to meet that, to match that alignment as much as possible.
The whole development will be estate lots?
That's correct.
The entire development?
Yes.
So there won't be any apartments or anything else?
No. No, it's, 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 I think the market out there with the, with the neighboring parcels, I think that estate lots would do really well. And, you know, 15 acres also would allow people to, you know, to have more property and, and, you know, almost serve as agricultural type, type setting.
With that being said, sir, you know, I'm sure you're well aware, when we annex property into the City Fairview, the basic designation is R40.
Correct.
It sounds like an agricultural lot, like an AR5 would be more appropriate. Have you considered another zoning designation?
Yeah, that'd be fine. And I know the base, the base zoning, when you, when you get annexed is RS40, you know, that, that's fine too. But I think, we, we talked about the agricultural designation as well and we don't, we don't have any problems with it. It's a, but we don't have any intent of developing one acre lots. I don't think that's the, that's, especially in the, from the Fairview side, it wouldn't make sense. On the Davidson County side, you know, you're limited by the number of lots you can have on a, on a private road. So, you know, wouldn't, we'd have to dedicate the road. We don't want, we don't want traffic. We don't want it to be a public road and have traffic cutting through. I don't think that would be...
Is there any intention to have any sort of agricultural use of the properties? Like stables or anything like that?
Yeah, well, you know, for, for 15 acres or, or greater, you can apply for green belt status, you know, which would be a, a tax benefit. Could be. We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to dictate that you have to have a, you know, barn or agricultural use, but it would be an amenity. I think it'd be nice.
The sewer system and water, is that coming from metro?
The sewer system, it's going to be onsite sewer and that's going to be, but the water will be served by Dixon. We've been...
For the whole project?
Correct. They've, they've agreed to serve the Harp Valley side over Davidson County's line. So we've got a letter of availability from the county, from Water Authority of Dixon. And we have, we haven't designed the, we haven't designed anything yet, but, but it will serve the site. Septic will, will be on the, it will be the responsibility of each homeowner, but for 15 acre lots, you know, that the soils will be favorable, you know, somewhere on the, on the parcels.
Metro's a lot more stringent on the septic systems than, than Williamson County is.
That's, that's news to me. Williamson County is really, really difficult, but we, we have some experience with, with metro as well. We may end up going through the state to see if the, just to have a common balance, see if the state will be willing to review all the septic permits. But, you know, either way with, that's another benefit, you know, kind of the, the goal of having the large lots is because, you know, if you have a five acre lot, you know, you can't really be certain that you're going to find good soils, you know, especially in Williamson County on that side. But in 15 acres, we think we will. So that's the, that's the thinking behind it.
So the property, it, it's so far away from the city center that it wasn't really, it wasn't included in the 2040 comprehensive plan. So the appropriate land use just would, would be the rural settlement area. And I see this as the most rural of the rural settlement. And if you would find it, would find an agricultural designation, like an AR5, how, how big did you say the lots were going to be?
15 acres.
15 acres. So if you would see AR15A as a designation that would fit your needs and the intent of, of the development, then that's something I'd be interested in making a motion for instead of the RS, instead of bringing it in as RS40. Mr. Collins? You have any thoughts?
I'm not, I'm not sure we can do that.
No?
The, the application that's been submitted is for R40. So I, what would have to take place to, to have that go would be for the applicant to withdraw their application and reapply or another designation, or have the planning commission consider what's presented. I don't, I don't, I don't think there'll be a provision to simply change the request for the zoning in, in this venue.
We would be able to amend it here in the moment.
The planning commission would not be able to amend it because the application before used for R40. So the, the applicant would have to withdraw the R40 and then a separate designation would have to be requested, or the planning commission can consider the R40 as, as presented with the information provided by the applicant.
What would be the timeline for something like that typically? If that were to happen?
That would depend on the applicant, maybe as soon as the next meeting, but in furtherance of that, the, in reviewing this, the staff has not seen a benefit to change the designation. The, the R40 and the stated use, particularly crossing with the, with the lot sizes and the plan that's been submitted, appears to be more than appropriate for the R40. And the, the staff can't find a reason to request a change in, in the zoning.
Fair enough. My initial concern is that even though the intent is very much what we've been told, that if we do bring it as R40, then later on down the line, it could hypothetically possibly maybe have one acre lots in that area. Correct. I'm just trying to do our best on the front end to ensure that that continues to remain a rural settlement feel.
Sure. Again, not speaking for the developer, but I, I think if you look at the whole development and the process that has been submitted to, we're, we're talking about a development that's pretty large and it, it will lie in two different counties with two different governing bodies, different sets of jurisdictions for all those things. So I think to go back and amend one use on one side of a county line as, as this is in somewhat adversarial to another stated use in another county, I think is counterintuitive to what they're attempting to do. We, we've looked at this from every angle and we can't find a, a reason with it, what they proposed wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't work. The other issue that would have that, that obviously offsets some of that concern is the lack of availability of utilities. So just the sewer discussion alone, I would have to come back for that. And there would also have to be a final plat at some point signed. So that, that will be a broader discussion to be brought about, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it appropriate at this time to make a motion to approve this?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I make the motion to approve PC 3521?
My second.
Rainey, Anderson, positive recommendation. Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Move to bonds. Item one, performance bond, Autumnon Cove subdivision, 437,700. So this is just a notification, no action needed, that, I guess it was reduced. Is that correct? Bonds and item two, performance bond, Windwood Park subdivision, phase two, 556,500. And stabilization bond, Windwood Park subdivision, phase two, 190,200. Both of these as well, no action needed, have been reduced or set? Set, okay. Reports for discussion and information, city planning staff. Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, over the last several months, we've had several projects come through. A few that have not come through yet, but have been announced on media with different projects and so forth. We're seeing a lot of new faces coming into Fairview and they're coming in with smiles and desires to be here. I want to thank each of you for being on a commission where things are being approved and set standards, where people are wanting to be part of the community. And we have large developers, large engineers, land planners that are making contact with us because they want to be here and they have clients that want to be here. So I just want to say thank you to each of you for being on this board and making the city where people desire to, to come here.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Viper?
Uh, nothing tonight, sir.
Thanks, sir. I just have two questions for you, just notes from earlier. That hillside ordinance at chapter 13, like the initial, it says, let's see, purpose and intent is establish development standards. So I guess I just asked the question, is it the intent of a development standard on the front end or is it the intent from a single family platted lot review?
I think it's intended to be established on the front end. Whenever either a master development plan or a community subdivision plan comes in, this is part of those standards that are to be reviewed at that point. I think we need to just look at where that makes sense and apply it where it makes sense and, and provide a little more than just a lot size specific to a slope. Because if you've got, you know, 200 acre lot and only the first 150 feet of it is critical lot, then by definition, the entire property becomes critical. So it makes it difficult to use it the way that, I think the, the original intent needs to be clarified a little more.
I agree. I think site plan becomes, becomes critical and making sure we're, we're there, so.
So that's the next question. Are we reviewing it from that standpoint of where we won't have recorded plat, lots come back and say, you're not buildable anymore?
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Absolutely. We want to get that to you on the front end. So when you see that and the applicant comes in, you can see where those would be and everything would be, as we all know, looking at, looking at a plat on flat piece of paper on the table doesn't really tell us the whole story. We want to make sure you have that full story at the time you approve it.
Okay.
And as I'm reviewing master development plans, I'm denoting those critical lights on there and making those comments as they come forward.
That's perfect. Thank you, sir. City manager, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Two things. First, what Mike has said to all of you certainly. Second, just to follow up, I explained this to the VOC, just to let you guys know. Obviously the work that we're planning to do in here, some of the upgrades, we got slowed down a little bit with some of our contractors and trying to get some of this work done. We went through kind of a bidding process where we had some contractors come in, do some work. We've had a contractor be very responsive, another contractor be somewhat responsive, a third contractor be no response at all. So we got with our auditors last week to get some clarification on where we, where we are. We had another contractor come in last Friday, give us some information. We expect to have that information this week. Worst case, we believe that we will have this work on the VOC agenda next Thursday night and this work complete sometime late September. So apologize, it has taken a little longer than we thought it would, but that's simply because of a lack of response we got back from one of our contractors and we want to make sure we comply with, with the bid law. Under the state's law, if you, if you're doing work like this, that's over $15,000, there's a bid process you have to go through. We were in compliance of that, we still are. However, with the lack of bid response, we just want to be doubly sure that we're, we're meeting that standard and we are. So we apologize for the inconvenience, but we believe it now be short-lived. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Calley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I'd just like to comment that the presentation, the overview that we were able to look at from Fernbrook with the undulation depicted is something that I would like to see more often with modern technology we have with computers and stuff. People can read the topographical maps if they're presented, but that 3D picture that you presented really allows the rank and file, who may look at this on YouTube or whatever, to see what you have. We've been eating the dust on that road for about six months and praying that it wasn't going to be multifamily sitting up on top of that hill like they do over in Lennox Village. So that's, I'm really excited with what you're trying to do and I'll eat a little more dust for that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Collins, do you have an update on the adoption of the 2040 plan at this point? And the rezoning, the new zoning ordinances?
Yes, sir. So the rezoning on the, or the zoning classification for commercial is complete and it's already gone through the board commissioners. The residential will be complete next month. Once we get the residential, no later than the end of September, first meeting in October. Once we get those, we'll go back with the overlay. We're still on schedule, actually a little ahead, to have the overlay complete either in December or January and then the formal adoption of the comprehensive plan after that.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That's all.
Sir, Ms. Senyard?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Ms. Shulis?
Do we have any upcoming workshops for planning commissions?
I believe next month we'll have one, possibly after that, but I know that there have been discussions of next month, at least at six o'clock.
Got it. That's all for me.
Thank you.
So, so as a part of that, you'll, you'll be receiving an email, the, there'll be a proposal to come to you. The, I believe the planning commission meeting next month is the 14th, as I see right there. As a matter of fact, I'm confident that it's September 14th. I'm, I'm almost as sure that it is September 14th. There's one development that will come before you that we'll need to take a greater look at. So what we'll request is there will be a work session at 6:00 PM on the 14th. We're also going to request through some information to go out to you, a work session one week before, kind of a come and go workshop, work session during the afternoon. I know everybody's schedule, so we can do later in the day, however that goes, that we'll likely set up. So it wouldn't have to be as much of a work session as it would be in... have to be as much of a work session as it would be in just an informational session in advance for that, for, for a development that's coming before you. So again, that wouldn't have to be a scheduled time. That will be a come as you can to attend that. We'll work within everybody's schedule to make sure the developer's here. But we will do that a week before on the 7th, figure out what those times are. But we will be here for plenty of time during the afternoon, so you can have that, get that information out to you, and then the hour-long work session on the 14th, as I'm sure it will be. That's all I have for you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just echoing on what Micah said, I just want to thank staff. I think, and Mr. Collins just celebrated five years last week with us. But I think I've been watching these meetings for almost 10 years, coming to meetings for nearly 10 years, and, and from a review standpoint, from a staff standpoint, we're more prepared and spending more time on documents and future planning. So it's, it's a, you know, there's more things coming to us, but thankfully, we're much more prepared than, than we were as I've watched the progression. So I'm confident in our staff, and I thank you guys for all the hard work that you do for us. That's all I have tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. So moved.